We've evaluated in our neighborhood parks, our golf courses, our fleet, parkway paving and lighting, and I T S. And when you look at the gap that we have for our capital needs in all of those areas, it's conservatively $140 million gap that we have. Eighty percent of that gap is solely in our neighborhood parks alone, $111 million. We also know that through our C I P, which is our Capital Improvements Plan, which is a five-year plan that looks at where we're going to make capital investments. The Capital Improvements Plan we have that takes us from 2016 to 2020, we know that that gap will grow by another $46 million during that period of time. And again, I'm just talking solely our neighborhood parks. We've been also able to project out to 2040 that if we do not change our funding stream for neighborhood parks, the gap between 2021 and 2040 will grow by another $304 million. So if you consolidated all that between 2000 and 2040, our neighborhood funding capital gap will be close to a half a billion dollars by 2040. This is a snapshot, and you actually have this in your packet that I gave you. This takes a look at our neighborhood parks by asset type, meaning each kind of asset we have in our neighborhood parks by category. What's in dark green is by asset type where we have made investments between 2000 and 2015 in capital only. Light green is what is scheduled to be spent in our Capital Improvements Plan between 2016 and 2020. And what is in red is the gap that we have. How we got this is we have a detailed inventory of every single one of our neighborhood parks and every asset we have in those neighborhood parks. We know when the asset was installed, we know the life cycle of each asset, we know the replacement cost of each asset, which is how we were able to come up with this information. So to the right of the bar chart, you will see numbers, and that is the gap in red for each asset type we have by 2020. And the total at the bottom is the $156 million gap we'll have by 2020 for capital investments. And then to the right of that in the gray box is, again, by asset type, what the gap will be by asset type by 2040, and then the total of almost a half a billion dollars by 2040. In addition to that, we have also done, we have 157 neighborhood parks, and of 100 of them, which are major neighborhood parks with rec centers, most of our assets, we've done what are called Park Fact Sheets on every single neighborhood park in the system. This is simply one of those. I have provided to you in the packet that I've given you six different neighborhood parks, one in each park district of the city, so that you can get a sense of what the gap is for each of those parks. But we also have, all of our Park Fact Sheets are posted on our website. To just walk you through this quickly, it obviously lists the name of the park, the address, has a map of Minneapolis to the right, so you can see where in Minneapolis that park is located. And then the boxes on the top, the far left, shows what the funding need is between 2000 and 2020. Again, this is capital only. Dark green shows what we spent between 2000 and 2015. Light green is what is scheduled to be spent based on our Capital Improvements Plan. And then the first box of red is what the gap, capitalized, will be by 2020. And then the red box on the far right is what the gap will be for that park alone by 2040. To the left, the box on the left lists the major assets in the park. Anything in red indicates that we have already passed the life cycle of that asset. The top two pie charts show where we have made investments, the one on the left by asset type, the one on the right, it shows where the gaps are where we have not made investments. And then the bottom two pie charts show what the gap is by 2020 and what the gap will be by 2040 percent-wise. Two things to note is that the most significant investments we've made across our neighborhood parks have been in playgrounds and wading pools. And the reason is that both of those facilities have requirements that we have to meet. And if we do not meet them, we have to close those facilities down. The two assets that we are the furthest behind, again, citywide, is our athletic fields and our recreation centers. Another thing to note, in fact, I'm going to go back to this slide to show you, if you took all of this data through 2020, put it in a pie chart, by 2020, 70% of all of the assets in our neighborhood park will be beyond their life cycle. That's only four years away. This chart, also, we also have operating gaps in our neighborhood park system. So these are examples, six examples of maintenance activities we do in our neighborhood parks. What we've done is, I'll use mowing as an example, we've identified the activity. The quantity that we mow is just over 2,700 acres. Our current service level is that we are able to mow on an average of a 14-day mowing cycle. Obviously, late summer, early fall, 14 days isn't a problem. But I think everybody knows that in spring and early summer, mowing every 14 days is not enough. We should actually be on an average mowing cycle of 10 days. So what we have done is calculated both from equipment and staffing what it would take to get to a 10-day mowing cycle. And for mowing, we'd need an additional $875,000 a year to get to a 10-day mowing cycle. Just these six maintenance activities, and we have more, total up to an annual gap of close to $3 million. So let me talk a little bit about neighborhood parks. As we all know, in the state of Minnesota, we have neighborhood parks and regional parks. Regional parks are parks like Worth Park, the Mississippi River Gorge, Minnehaha Park, the Chain of Lakes. Those are destination parks. Nakamas as well. Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. And they are larger in size, generally 100 acres or greater, and they have more natural features. Neighborhood parks are really the heart and soul parks of our city. They're embedded within the neighborhoods in Minneapolis. They are smaller, generally a block or smaller. However, Councilmember Quincy has one of our largest neighborhood parks, Pearl Park, in his district. They also, our neighborhood parks have the greatest number of physical assets. They have our rec centers, our wading pools, our playgrounds. Not that some of our regional parks don't have some of those. The reason why some of our neighborhood parks have those is because our system, the Minneapolis Park System, is older than the regional system. And when the regional system came into being, there is criteria by which certain amenities cannot be in regional parks. And because our system is older, our parks that had those assets were grandfathered in that are in the regional system. We know that our capital investments, again, going to the data and knowing how many assets we have, the life cycle of those assets, we know that from a capital perspective, investment perspective, we need $14.3 million a year, based on 2015 numbers, to meet annually our capital investment needs in our neighborhood parks. We also know that we have between $4 and $5 million annually to spend on our neighborhood parks. So we annually have a gap of at least $9.3 million that is growing every year. And we know that that started back at least in 2000. Our annual maintenance gap is a minimum of $3 million annually that we need to take care of our parks. So what we've done is, starting in May of last year through October, we held over 30 public meetings across the city to both share this information with the public, but also to get their feedback and input about priorities and their thoughts about how do we solve this problem. We also, in February of last year, conducted a citywide statistically valid survey of residents of Minneapolis, and there's some data that I'm going to share with you about that. We also looked at other park systems. We got a grant from the McKnight Foundation to look at 11 other cities across the country to see if they're coming up with solutions that we have not thought of. And we also, the Trust for Public Land, conducted a feasibility analysis to look at funding options for the park board to address these issues. We, I'm not going to go into great depth about our community engagement, but as you can see, we held a whole host of different kinds of community engagement, different ways to make sure we got input from youth, adults, people who are involved in our parks, people who are not involved in our parks, so that we understood really what the community wants to, has to say about parks. And we did it in collaboration with REC quests and our service area master plans. And both of those initiatives are looking to the future of our city in terms of recreation centers as well as amenities in our neighborhood parks. So in October of last year, I presented the Closing the Gap Investing in Neighborhood Parks report. That was the report that was the culmination of all of the public engagement we received in Minneapolis. The report includes findings on funding, programs and services, rec centers, outdoor facilities and assets, and maintenance and care. And around funding, with all the community engagement methods we had, there was overwhelming support for increase in property taxes to maintain the system we have. What I want to point out is that as part of the Morris Leatherman survey that they did, they also indicated that residents' responses revealed that judicious improvements or expansion would be seen as part of the greater maintenance effort. These are the results from the Morris Leatherman survey. The pie chart on the left shows that almost 80% of residents support or strongly support increase in property taxes to maintain our system. If you look at the pie chart on the right, they asked the same question about enhancing services, and the numbers are almost the reverse. So residents of Minneapolis want to make the investments needed to take care of the neighborhood system that we have. The other thing I presented to the board in October was the report on the public and private funding strategies for neighborhood parks. This is the report from looking at other cities across the country. Couple of key findings was that public financing was demonstrated consistently, consistently as the tool to address system-wide funding, that public-private partnerships and unique funding mechanisms really were only successful in cities to address individual parks or destination parks, or in our case, regional parks. And that's pretty consistent with what we do here as well. We have our parking system that generates revenue, but that's in the regional system. We have restaurants that generate revenue, those in our regional system. So really, what we found by looking at cities across the country is the way in which we're addressing and solving financial challenges is consistent with what's happening across the country. And finally, we presented the report from the Trust for Public Land, looking at our relationship with the city and financial options that we can look at relative to funding. And the two most significant and really viable options for us are to look at a levy and property tax increase that, as you know, would require city council approval, and it would be voter-approved. A levy would allow us to address both capital and operating challenges. The other alternative is a general obligation bond that, again, would require city council approval to do that. And the difference is, is that a general obligation bond can only be used for capital investments, so it will not be able to address the operating needs. Morris Leatherman survey, I talked a little bit about that. Again, that survey was done to ask a whole host of questions about the park system as well as the park board, and I shared with you the questions that were focused on revenue generating strategies. Since October, President Walensky and I, in particular, have been meeting with all of you, as well as county commissioners, the governor's office, our legislators at the state, so they understand the dilemma we're in and what we're trying to do to address this. And we're pursuing all options to get a referendum or a charter amendment on the ballot. The work that's been done actually since January is that in January of 2016, the Save the Minneapolis 501(c)(4), or the Citizens Group to support a referendum, was organized to help support a referendum for the November ballot. On January 6th of this year, our board passed a resolution, which you also have in your packet, really approving proposed ballot language for the November 16 ballot, as well as elements of an agreement with the city of Minneapolis to protect existing funding streams. I also presented to the board, which you have in your packet, is a programs initiative the first five years. It's really a framework about how we would make investments if a referendum were to pass. And I also let the board know that in April of this year, I will be presenting to them a draft, criteria-based rehabilitation and capital investment plan for the first five years of a referendum. In February of 2003, our board took action to override the mayor's veto that she did on the ballot language resolution. So our board, in February of 2016, overrode that veto of the mayor. On February 17th, the board passed action giving direction to me to pursue all avenues within the bounds of the law for a referendum or some initiative to be on the ballot of November 16. And then on March 2nd of 2016, I presented to the Charter Commission proposed language for a charter amendment to address the funding needs. The Charter Commission, on March 2nd, following our discussion, voted to begin the public hearing process to consider a charter amendment. And they have already scheduled public hearings for March 29th, April 4th, and April 6th to begin that conversation. And the Save Minneapolis Parks 501(c)(4) group has just begun the process of getting formal endorsements, and they've received endorsements to date from the League of Women Voters of Minneapolis, the Minneapolis Parks Foundation, the Trust for Public Land, and Stonewall DFL. So today, I'm here actually to ask for your support for additional funding for neighborhood parks. And what I'd like to do now is walk you through the resolution that council members have before you.
So Superintendent Miller, I think before we do that, I just want to take a pause in case people have questions on sort of what was your original proposal?
Uh huh.
And which is reflected in the first part of your presentation, and then we can turn to you walking us through.
Perfect.
Your perspective on the proposed resolution, which I'll just note, for most council members, is very fresh, and so there might be a lot of questions, and I think they won't all be for you.
Right.
They will be for a variety of people. And so Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There needs to be some way to estimate the budget needs. I appreciate the care that went into looking at each park. But is that funding programmed into a capital budget the way you would see in our existing five-year capital budget for parks or our public works capital budget? Or is it still an estimate that then would be programmed after the funding became available?
Currently, we have a capital, our Capital Improvements Plan is a five-year plan that is for our entire park system, regional and neighborhood parks. We go through the click process for our neighborhood parks, so yes, we propose those. But clearly, the fact that we are short close to $10 million a year, and really, the only annual dedicated amount that is for neighborhood parks is $2.5 million, our ability to program everything, it's unrealistic because we know there is no money to do it.
I think that's a reasonable response, but just to be clear, so my constituents or our constituents couldn't go through a list of capital, it's not like you have a capital budget that's detailed and $10 million short, and we're filling in the funding. We're proposing more funding that then would be programmed into the future.
That's correct. And Councilmember Bender, that is in April, I'm going to be presenting both a matrix by which it will be an objective matrix where decisions will be made about where funding should go. And I'll be proposing a very specific five-year plan for both capital and rehab. And the idea would be that obviously, if we get funding for addressing our capital needs, then we will obviously have a more robust neighborhood capital plan. And one of the challenges that we're faced with as we try to develop this plan is we have almost a 20-year backlog of needs in the system. And I can tell you, and I'm sure you hear it and all of you hear, every neighborhood wants their park address first. And so we have some significant challenges trying to balance all of that out.
We share those challenges here, and maybe it leads to the next question I have, which is this slide 12 estimates an additional 5% levy increase to cover what I believe is about a 20% capital increase over the $2.5 million annually.
So what is slide five?
Slide 12 I have here, property tax impact.
Slide 12.
Oh, that's, okay. So then maybe the correct question for you is have you estimated, so our staff has estimated a 5% levy increase that would be needed to support this. Is that consistent with what the park board has estimated? Have you estimated how much we will have to raise property taxes, assuming we're not funding?
5% is pretty consistent, yes.
And so have, what would happen if we, for example, decided collectively that we weren't able to support a 5% levy increase just for parks, given all of our other needs, including our streets, infrastructure needs? What would happen if you had half of that, like a 10% increase annually? Have you, is there a tiered approach that we could take that would be more incremental over time to allow for us to, again, guard the need for us to not really significantly increase property taxes in one year, given all of our other needs?
We haven't gone down that, but if that was what ended up happening, we would have to figure something out. But again, I think Councilmember Bender and the rest of council, one of the things that's really important to know is that in less than five years, 70% of the assets in our entire neighborhood park system will be beyond their life cycle.
So I had a couple of questions, and then we have Councilmember Gordon, and then I think if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Others might pop in here. So first, I wanted just a refresher, you showed the slide where you talked about the resolution of the park board on the details of this referendum proposal. Can you just refresh me on how much you were seeking to raise per year? Because I know the new proposal's a little different than that.
Right.
And then also, had you articulated how that many would be spent in terms of broad categories or percentages, you know, on?
Right.
Maintenance, capital, new spending, or new assets, or, you know, however you were doing that?
Absolutely. Great question, Councilmember Glidden, excuse me. You have, and I know the public does not have that, but in the packet I gave you, you have Resolution 2016-112. And if you go to page two of that, at the bottom, is actually the ballot language that our board approved, and it speaks specifically to a .0388% increase based on the estimated market value of the city per year for 20 years. So that, I think, addresses.
So what does that, what does that amount to? So what's the money?
That equates to a little over $15 million a year. And for an average property owner in Minneapolis, which a house is valued at about $190,000, that's a little less than $66 a year. In terms of how we would spend the money, you also have in your packet, and let me, you have a sheet that looks like this. And that is the programs and initiatives first five years. And it is the framework by which we would be making decisions about how to allocate the money. And it's three categories, maintain our system, which gets to the operating side, the mowing, tree trimming, building, maintenance, and then rehab, and then replace and invest, which is in actually the capital investments. You'll see that the biggest amount of resources are in the invest category. And the reason that is, is that we have, our assets are so far behind that we have to replace many of them. But what we have to juggle is balancing out the rehab and the invest categories, they play off each other, that as we determine what we would be prioritizing to spend in the invest category, where we would most likely be replacing assets, is that because we still have a number of assets that are falling apart, we have to make significant rehab investments in order for those assets to kind of hold on until they can get to year 10, 15, or 20, when we can actually do the replace and invest.
So I just have two more questions. One is, again, another point of clarification, just because this is a question that I hear from constituents about what might be covered or what is anticipated to be covered, and I might be wrong too. But my understanding is this is talking about park board facilities and assets other than the recreation centers, which is what we call, you know, the building, hosting, any programming, or the desk space, and all those, your gym and stuff like that. I could be wrong in understanding that, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Glidden, again, a very good question. This covers every asset in our neighborhood parks, including recreation centers.
Okay, so it does cover the recreation.
Yes, it does.
Centers.
Yes, it does.
Thank you. And then final question is, so this category on the replace and invest, again, it's the biggest category, but I think kind of going to that question that you did the polling on, which is about what do residents feel about enhancements or additions as opposed to making sure we're maintaining the world-class quality of our park system? How much were you anticipating would go into this category called Building the Future, which I think is about the new investments?
Well, actually, replace and investment, I'll just read through some of the language under the category, which is things like recognizing the service life of existing park assets, buildings, fields, playgrounds, and planning for their replacement according to the Community Developed Master Plan, which are the service area master plans. So we will be replacing assets because they're beyond their life cycle. We'll be implementing master plans for those neighborhood parks to repair and improve and place existing assets that the board has already approved, but we don't have the funding to do. We'll be focusing on, again, on approving service area master plans and existing parks in underserved areas of the city. So we will be replacing assets, but because they're at the end of their life cycle. But we will also do replacements, not one-for-one per se. For example, let me just make a good analogy. If you look at the demographics of the city today, compared to the demographics in the 70s or 80s, it's very different. We all acknowledge that. We have, in the 70s and 80s, we put a lot of ball fields, baseball fields. Many of those ball fields may need to get changed to soccer fields because of the population and the recreation needs of different neighborhoods in the city. So those will be new amenities, but they will replace existing amenities to meet the future demographics and the current demographics of the city. Another example, again, from our surveys, is our recreation centers. Many of them don't have air, most of them do not have air conditioning, pre-run, day camps and childcare programs there in the summer, and the internal temperature of those buildings in the summer often will hit 120 or 130 degrees. So we can't even use them. So putting in air conditioning is an enhancement, yes, but it is essential for us to deliver services. So those are two examples that talk about enhancements that I believe are consistent what the public has told us they want.
Okay. And I was just really trying to clarify, and thank you for those examples, was there a portion of this that was going to building the system? And I just say that because I know that the park board has several plans that kind of are about, that you partner on with the city.
Right.
That are about building the system, you know, the riverfront work, your Halls Island proposal, other things. And this would not be about funding those types of things.
Correct.
They just wanted clarity, so.
Councilmember Glidden, really good questions, and those are questions we get. This is about our neighborhood system.
Okay, thank you.
Which is really built out, the only area of the city that I would say that the neighborhood system is not built out, and that is downtown. And I think Councilmember Frye Goodman can attest to that, given all of the residents that are now beginning to live downtown. That will be a future challenge we have to face. But this is all based on our existing neighborhood system only. And River First and Halls Island are part of the regional system, and would not at all be addressed in this. Thank you for that clarity. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. And these might be over simple questions, this is a lot of information trying to gather.
Absolutely.
There was one slide that had the feasibility report from the Trust for Public Land, and it mentioned there were two possible referendums that we could go for, and I just want to get clarity if there's any legal dispute about the issue. I thought there was some idea that we could only go forward with a general obligation bond that would have to be tied to capital improvements. We actually can't go forward with a referendum that would cover operational expenses. So is there, are all our attorneys all in alignment on this, or is there some controversy?
Councilmember Gordon, again, another great question. No, all the attorneys are not in alignment about that. And I can tell you that the Trust for Public Land attorneys who do these kind of referendums all over the country and legally look at things, as well as our attorney, Council Rice, believe that state statute allows us to do a referendum for operating in capital. The city attorney disagrees with that and believes that we could only do a general obligation bond.
Okay, so I just wanted to raise that up.
Absolutely, great question.
And confirm my memory was correct. Then I am also curious about the capital improvements, whether it's through the referendum or another alternative. Would they still go through our standard click process where they'd be reviewed, there'd be a five-year plan, just like all the other city investments?
Councilmember Gordon, absolutely. We would continue that same public engagement and review process.
All right, thank you.
So we've had questions on that portion, so if you're able to move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Glidden. And so, again, because I know this is fresh for your eyes, it's fresh for our board, and it's fresh for the public, I wanted to take the opportunity to walk you through the resolution that's before you, because there is a lot of detail in that resolution. And this is a 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan between the city of Minneapolis and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. And this resolution recognizes that parks and open spaces have been a shared community and civic value. And then it recognizes that the park system constitutes one of the most cherished and defining features of what is Minneapolis. It also recognizes that with the leadership of the park board and the support from the city of Minneapolis, parks have developed in this community over six generations to serve the public's need for parks and recreation. And that, in that time, Minneapolis parks have been repeatedly recognized nationally as one of the very best systems in the United States. And it also recognizes that the park board has identified significant financial gaps for necessary maintenance, rehabilitation, and capital improvements to the Minneapolis Neighborhood Park System. By working in partnership through this resolution, it is our belief that we have developed a 20-year financial plan to close that neighborhood park funding gap called the 20-Year Neighborhood Park Plan. And we'd like to memorialize that plan in concurrent ordinances. The plan, as detailed in this resolution, will be set forth in concurrent ordinances ordinances adopted by both the city and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. The plan would be in effect for 20 years, from 2017 to 2036, and that the financial resources provided under the plan would be used exclusively to fund the neighborhood park system. In addition, the city would provide the park board with $1.5 million in startup funds by December 31st of 2016 to be invested in capital improvements to rehabilitation of and/or operating expenses related to the neighborhood park system. The city will recommend to the Board of Estim and Taxation an increase of our adopted, the park board's adopted base 2016 park and recreation tax levy amount of $52,583,000 by $3 million in 2017, and that equates to about a 1% property tax increase. The agreement also speaks to the park board and city council representatives that sit on the BET voting affirmatively for this increase, and that it would be the intent of these parties that this increase would remain in effect for the duration of the plan, that it will be used to increase funding for general operations of the neighborhood park system, and that it will not supplant other operations funding for the neighborhood park system. Also, beginning in 2017 and continuing for the term of the plan, the city will provide guaranteed minimum annual funding for rehabilitation and capital projects for neighborhood parks. The park board capital projects would be part of the city's annual five-year capital improvement program process, as Councilmember Gordon mentioned. The guaranteed minimum annual amount will be $10.5 million per year, the form of which has not been determined but will be some combination of levy, cash, or bond proceeds, totally at the discretion of the city. One of the things, I also want to be clear, the $10.5 million includes what has historically been $2.5 million that we have received from the city for net debt bonding. So the increase for the city would be $8 million, not the full $10.5 million. The city and the park board will review and adjust the guaranteed minimum annual amount every five years based on a mutually acceptable objective measure of inflationary costs and other salient factors on or before December 15th of 2020, 2025, and 2030. Also, beginning in 2017 and continuing for the term of the plan, examples of mutually acceptable objective measures of inflationary costs and other salient factors will be set forth in the concurrent ordinances. The 2020, 2025, and 2030 adjustments will be approved by concurrent resolutions by the city and the park board. The 2020 adjustments will be for years 2022 through 2026. The 2025 adjustments will be for years 2027 through 2031. And the 2030 adjustments will be for years 2032 to 2036. Expenditures of the guaranteed minimum funding and future adjusted annual amounts will be under the sole control of the park board, and they must be used for neighborhood parks. The park board and the city acknowledge and agree that there also needs to be, for both organizations, the ability to address future unanticipated critical needs such as natural disasters, diseases, acts of God, and exigent economic events such as state-imposed levy limits, decreased market value for tax capacity purposes, changes in the state's property tax classification system, and other potentially impactful events. The ordinance will not preclude either agency from addressing these unanticipated critical needs or exigent economic events in managing their fiscal responsibilities. For any applicable year within the 20-year period of this plan, the city council may determine that the occurrence of an unanticipated critical need or exigent economic event prevents the city from maintaining the agreed-upon level of support to the park board for that applicable year. If so, if the city council makes that determination and the amount of funding is less than the $10.5 million or less than the subsequent approved adjusted amount, it must be set forth an amendment to the ordinance for that applicable year. Also, the park board will continue to receive what we have already agreement with the city, which is the 11.79% of the annual LGA funds that are awarded to the city each year irrespective of this 20-year plan. The park board will continue to pay, as we do now, the city's administrative and benefit administration fees with a mutually agreed-upon cost allocation methodology at rates that are proportionate to the rates that the city applies its own operations, again, irrespective of the 20-year plan. The park board will also continue to retain its authority, as provided in the city charter and state law, to request a maximum property tax amount and rate from the Board of Estim and Taxation, and to adopt an annual property tax levy within the maximum set by the BET, again, irrespective of this 20-year plan. It is also understood and agreed that the city and the park board will pass similar resolutions, meaning the resolutions before you, supporting the 20-year plan, and the city and park board will be preparing 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan concurrent ordinances that are consistent with the resolutions approved. It is also understood and agreed that if adopted by both parties, the 20-year plan concurrent ordinances are intended for the duration of the plan to be a substitute for any levy referendum, charter amendments, or other ballot measures to provide additional funding to the park board outside of existing annual levy and capital budget processes. Provided, however, that if the city council consistently, at least three years, three consecutive years, exercises its right under the ordinances to significantly reduce or suspend rehabilitation and capital funding for the park board, the park board's obligation to not seek support from the public in the form of a referenda, charter amendment, or other ballot measure will no longer be binding, and neither party will then thereafter have to any further obligations under the plan if the park board so chooses to exercise its rights to go to the voters. Also, this resolution speaks to the fact that the park board and the city will consider these resolutions that approve the 20-year plan and directing staff to prepare concurrent ordinances pursuant to the normal timeframes for noticing, intent, introducing subject matter, and holding respective public hearings to implement the 20-year plan for city council final adoption by April 15th of this year and by the park board by April 20th of this year. So I think that walks through the entire resolution. Councilmember Glidden, and again, I or council members are, I'm sure, apt to answer any questions.
I'm just reading your end card here. Wow, okay. I was just looking at the timeline here. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to see what questions there are, and I might ask first, just because the two authors are here, if Council President Johnson or Councilmember Goodman would maybe like to make some comments first before we kind of go into questions and dialogue. So, okay, there isn't nodding, and I think Council President will take the floor, though.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this concept, and I will tell you that I came to this realization and challenge with, I feel, a really hefty understanding of the needs of the park system. I served on the Metropolitan Parks and Open Space Commission for 18 years, representing the city of Minneapolis. And so I understand the distinctions between the regional park system and the local park system, neighborhood park system. And I, you know, very carefully watch the park board's budget. I will tell you, they probably, I watch it probably more carefully than they're happy with sometimes. But the park system is such an integral part of our city and how we attract people here, keep people here, bring businesses here. And I just think it is really important for us as a city to understand that if we go off on referendum here and referendum there, that it is a really challenging way to govern. We are best served when there is an overall agreement about the expenditures made as a city. And it doesn't do us any good, I think, in the relationship that we have with the park system to be.